With that, then, we'll move into the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hughley, you want to hit your mic there?
No.
There you go.
Madam Mayor, we have one item we would like to add to the legislative agenda. As you know, Chief Rick Boeran came to the Hometown Connection and he made the point, or shared his concern, that the police department sheriff are both having to deal with. And so, we are requesting the legislative delegation to amend the Georgia law so as to relieve counties' police chiefs and sheriffs from bearing transportation costs and related expenses when juveniles are ordered to be transported to or from a facility outside the jurisdiction of the juvenile court hearing such a matter.
Second.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Next, I've got a sidewalk variance at 4306 Fifteenth Avenue, and we are requesting you authorize a variance to the city code delaying the construction of sidewalk along the right-of-way frontage at this location until sidewalks are installed on adjacent properties.
Second.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion? All right, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got a street acceptance at Charleston Way, a portion of Arianna Drive, at Sullivan Drive, and that portion of Sullivan's Drive located in replaid of Section 1 Charleston Place. It's been improved and meet the requirement, the required specification for acceptance by the city.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes. Oh, wait, hold on, we got one more. There we go. Okay, there we go.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Got a quitclaim property at 2362 South Andrews Road and 0 Casita Road. After conducting research, we discovered the properties were quitclaimed to the city without the city's knowledge or consent, and we've had our lawyer look at it and has rendered a legal opinion to the matter and determined if the city does not wish to keep the property, we would need to renounce the quitclaim, reconvey the property back to the original owner. And the city does not have a need for this property and would like council's approval to do exactly what has been provided by our lawyer. And with the city owning the properties, we can tell you that it increases liability, our maintenance costs, and takes additional properties off the tax roll, and we do not need it. And so, we're asking your approval to...
Got a motion and second for approval. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And I think we've got one more. Who's missing? Okay, that's it. It passes.
We've got, next, we've got property acquisition, 2212 First Avenue, asking approval to purchase this property at $15,000 to include closing costs in an effort to assemble land in the city village redevelopment area. The property will be purchased utilizing CDBG funds. It was recently appraised at $15,000. The owner has agreed to sell the property to the city for fair market value minus closing costs. And so, that total purchase is $15,000. And again, it will allow us to assemble parcels of property in the city village for future redevelopment. We're asking your approval.
All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, you may record your votes electronically. Let's see, somebody, Councilor Woodson?
Oh.
Okay, and it does pass.
Next, I've got temporary use of special event permit for dimensions at Venture Zone. They received authorization to host a haunted house as a special event from October 5th through October 29th, and the company would like to extend the special event until November 4th, 2019.
Second.
Got a motion and second for approval. There being no discussion, you may record your votes electronically.
And, Madam Mayor, I just want to ensure that this says 2019, but it should be 2018, so that's a correction.
Yeah.
November 4th, 2018.
Right. All right, thank you.
And I've got a fiscal year 2020 grant application for planning assistance. Georgia DOT is contributing $119,396 to the city, $13,000.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval of the grant application. There's no further discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
So, I have purchases, and you've already approved F. And so, the first one is fire sprinkler service and inspections. It's with Protech Fire Protection Systems.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval of A through E and G, and a second. Is there any discussion on any one of these items, A through E and then G? We've got fire sprinkler services and inspection, annual contract, self-propelled scissors lift, a contract extension for long-distance telephone services, payment for local phone service billing, a service maintenance plan for fire EMS burn building, and a statement of work number three for CGI Advantage 360 Software as a Service Agreement. There being no discussion, our call to pull any of those, you may record your votes electronically. Let's see, Councilor Davis and, yeah, that's it. Okay, all right.
Got a couple of 2018, 19 Volka Grants Victim Witness Assistance Program Grants for the Solicitor General. And the first one is for the salary of a victim advocate investigator. It's $49,268.6. The second one for a domestic violence assistance solicitor is $67,209.07. The third is a salary supplement for a program director. It's $12,000. And the fourth for additional operating expenses, $6,000.
Got a motion and second for approval. There's no further discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And the last item I've got, Madam Mayor, is a update on small cell towers. And I've got Director Donna Newman here, the engineering director, and Rick Jones, our planning director.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We want to talk to you briefly here tonight about what small cells are and what they're, what the impact could be and will be on Columbus over the next several months and years we go along. We want to talk about, give you an idea of what really what small cells really are, what cell towers versus small cells, and what that really means to us from that. Set aside this idea about small cell regulation, and then also show you the existing small cell sites we have in the community as a whole. Just so you understand now, small cells are, really consist of small radio equipment. That's what it really boils down to. They're not the height you'll see of a regular cell tower, for instance, from that. These things can be placed on streetlights, sides of buildings, or poles. In Columbus, they probably will not be allowed on a streetlight because they are owned by Georgia Power. And Georgia Power does not allow coexisting equipment on those kind of structures. They can transmit data, which is what they really are designed to do, using mid- and high-speed band spectrums throughout the community that cannot really travel far. These are, you're going to find out, these are small cells that are there to transmit data. They do handle phone calls, but their primary function is to transmit data, and it's over a short range, whereas particularly where they don't have enough coverage from the cell tower itself, where they can't handle that kind of volume. This is largely due, you and I are largely the culprits on this, because if you have a cellphone and you require the use of data or any type of information, we're now draining, really, some of these cell tower sites, and they can't keep up with the demand. You hear, you're going to hear, you're going to hear a lot more about in dealing with this thing called 5G technology, which is merely the fifth generation, which is actually speeding up the data and getting the data to more folks as we go along. It does promise greater speeds, response times, connectivity. This is particularly important to a lot of folks if you're downloading, say, a video or something to that effect, and you want to watch it on your phone. It'll speed that process up, supposedly, on that. Nationwide, not Columbus now, but nationwide, there were 13,000 small cells deployed in 2017. By 2026, they are estimating there'll be over 800,000 of these small cells throughout the country. They're there for a purpose, and we want to explain it to you. Let me show you, this gives you an idea, talking about cell towers versus these small cells. On the left-hand side of this slide is a regular cell tower, for the most part. What it talks about here is it's good for voice, data signals can travel, can degrade, really, over a certain amount of time or in distance itself. The small cells are good for voice and data, but they're compressed. They can only go so far out in terms of what signal they send for the area. And you can see by the rating system this slide gives in terms of voice versus data, the small cells can do both. But again, they are restricted in terms of how far they can actually send that signal out. Towers are really best for low-density populations. That's kind of a misnomer in some regard, because all we see in Columbus are the cell towers, but they're covering a wider area, a broader area. The smaller cells will be more compressed, as I said, and they'll serve primarily the area they're in, and not necessarily a wide scheme of things from that. This is an argument you're going to hear in dealing from the state, from the state legislature in terms of some of the action they've got going on now, that the small cells, for the most part, should be in the rural areas. But that's not, that's reverse thinking here, really, because these small cells are really designed just to hold on to those smaller areas around them and not really designed for the rural areas themselves. There are three facets to this thing you need to understand about in dealing with cell regulation. They are the Federal Communications Commission, which is the FCC, the Georgia State Legislature, and of course, the Columbus Consolidated Government and the role we play in regulation of any type of wireless device like this. And I want to go through this somewhat briefly and not overwhelm you with this, but you should know that back in 1996, the Wireless Communication Act was passed by Congress. The FCC was required to enforce it, required, it preserved the fact that where we could actually locate some of these cell towers through our zoning process. And we took that on in 1999, in terms of putting that ordinance together and make sure we could control them. It requires that it has to be a reasonable period of time in terms of responding back to an applicant. Now, that timeframe is 90 days, at least it was when the act was passed in 1996. And this is what they call the shot clock. We have 90 days, basically, to respond to an applicant. By the time they make an application to us, whether it goes through inspection code or engineering or even through the planning department, we have to have that response back in a 90-day timeframe. We have to have substantial evidence when we make a decision about a cell tower now, particularly if you're going to deny one. It can't be just because we don't want it, we don't like the color, other things like that. It has to be a substantial reason why we don't want a particular cell tower in that particular part of the community. And it also ensures that carriers are allowed to provide cell service in the community. They are considered like any other public utility, as a necessity for the community to thrive and deal with, and we understand that. I think we all agree the fact that cell service is an important factor in our lives now and in the life of this community. We cannot deny that. By law, by federal law, we cannot deny or restrict that. We have to make a reasonable allowance in allowing folks to come in to a community and provide cell service for us, and we certainly have done that since 1999. In September of this year, September 26th exactly, an edict was written by the Federal Communication Commission, calling this long name, but Accelerating Wireless Broadband Deployment by Removing barriers to Infrastructure Investment. Say that fast three times. This creates now a 60-day shot clock for us, in terms of when we have to, we get an application now for a small cell, we have to respond within 60 days on that. Otherwise, we are in violation of the law from that standpoint. It limits our application fees. We don't charge $500 for five sites, but that's what this edict now says to, this directive now says to communities. And then the $100 for each site after that. It would limit our right-of-way fees to $270 per site, per year, and would also limit our local control of aesthetics in dealing with these poles, including this idea of minimum spacing.
Yeah. Councilor Woodson would like to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am. Rick, out of curiosity, because I'm having problems right now with this situation, because I brought one, I think it was like two weeks ago, to council, and I brought the picture where, you know, we're being forced to allow this in neighborhoods, but we're putting people in a dangerous situation because the wiring and the, I guess, the box, whatever you call it.
Yes, ma'am.
The generator box, it's at a person's level. I mean, I, you know, I can't understand that. And then, you know, I'm just having a hard time, and I think for, to get a vote for me lately is going to kind of be tough, because we're putting our citizens and our children at harm. I know it's a federal, because Isaiah already told me it's a federal law, there's not a whole lot of control we have, but we've got to come up with something. There's got to be something that can be, you know, done. And are these fees that we set, or is this the fee that comes from the federal and state?
These are the fees that come now from the federal government.
Okay. So, we couldn't even increase them if we wanted and make it expensive for them.
They've basically taken away local control.
Exactly.
Well, we need to educate our communities on it. Because the citizens think, I know my constituent thinks I don't care, you know, and I do, because I call Donna. I think it was late at night, early in the morning on the weekend. I mean, I brought the picture here. The citizens, we need to do an educational piece on our access channel to let them know that this is out of our control. This is not something that we're putting in place, because I still have a big concern that someone's going to, you know, nowadays, people don't respect value of life, and I'm worried that somebody's going to have a problem and pull those wires, break into them just for fun, for a drug initiative, you know, not a drug, a gang initiative or something. You know, I just...
And so, Mayor, Council, we met with one of the providers today, just before council meeting, and at the end of his update, I think he's going to share with you the progress that we made today. And so, I think, you know, we're going to do as much as we can within what we have, and we don't have much, because we can't even go out there and tell them where to put it on the right-of-way. We don't have a right to do that. And so, in other words, if they want to put it here, and we say, well, would you go down 10 feet, and we're going to put it right here.
I already experienced that.
And so, but he's going to get to some of this as he goes through the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, this is really sensitive to me, because I was very, very upset. I'm still upset each time I drive by there, and so, I'm annoyed, so I'm sorry. Continue.
Well, let me proceed home, and I'll try to begin rebriefing this. The one thing you need to carry away from this whole presentation, I think, is this last statement on this slide, that there is a misconception nationwide, that cities are basically opposed to these kind of operations coming into their community, dealing with, we either dealing with small cells or cell towers, and nothing can be further than the truth. I've already said that to you, that we have to, not have to, we want to be welcoming about the fact, about the service these companies provide us, because we all depend upon it. But there is that misconception, on the federal level anyway, right now, that we just don't, we just don't want these kind of operations in there. From the Georgia State Legislature, you should know that there is Title 46, called Public Utilities and Public Transportation, which is part of the Georgia Code now, that addresses the needs on right-of-ways and right-of-way access and things of that nature. That's already in place, and we are adhering to that on a day-to-day basis. However, this last legislative session, at least two more bills were passed, or at least introduced that were not passed, excuse me. One is Senate Bill 426, entitled Broadband and Infrastructure Leads to Development Act. This was designed, or at least given the impression, that the idea was provide cellular service to the rural areas of the state, which I'm wholeheartedly in support of. I think they need to have that kind of issue. But the idea also was, though, this act, this bill, if it passed, would have told us pretty much that we don't have any control over our right-of-way inside the city of Columbus, that pretty much we need to stay away from it in terms of limiting, you know, where we can prohibit them or how we can regulate them, how we can, what we can charge for the right-of-way cost itself. Those are all important issues to us. This bill passed, from my understanding, it actually passed the House and was amended to address more of the EMC's needs in terms of dealing with cellular service. But it didn't make it to the Senate, because it was the last day, the last hour of the last day and so forth. It didn't cross back over to the House for approval. But it's out there still for consideration. I'm sure it'll come back up this next session. And then this House Bill 887, this Georgia Communications Service Act, was another one that was ideal, was to limit the inability to deny new pole applications, allow for 120 permits at a time, grant approval for our application after 75 days, and then cap the rental rate on right-of-way as well. It didn't make it out yet, but it's still there for consideration this next go-around. Those are important things, because again, we lose control of what we're trying to deal with on our right-of-ways. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again to you, our intent about this whole thing is not to deny cell service, but we are trying to look at the safety of where these things go, these structures go, because they could be a hindrance in terms of dealing with traffic. If you have a wreck, you run into a pole, we're liable for if you've done that. If there's no coordination between these utilities and the existing utilities already in the ground, we have a real problem as well, particularly from the engineering standpoint. They need to know where these units are going and make sure there are no problems in terms of coordination of the utilities and not impacting somebody else.
Rick, we have a question from Councilor, Councilor Thomas.
Mr. Jones, do these two bills automatically roll over into the next session?
I don't think so.
Do we?
I think they've got to introduce them over again, and the building number might change, yes.
Okay. And refresh my memory, we didn't have anything of this on our agenda, did we, addressing this issue?
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay, okay. Let's just make sure that our folks are real cognizant of our position on that.
And I do think we've gotten their attention, our local delegation, so I think...
Good, good.
But the third factor we're trying to achieve here is the aesthetics part of it, making sure that it is appealing to the community, that it's not going to be a hindrance to Councilor Woodson's neighborhood, or any of your neighborhoods for that matter, in terms of...
Well, I would hope that our delegation would help keep us informed as these come up, and maybe as they go to committee, so that if we need to send people to the Capitol to testify to the committees and so forth, I think you're right, Mr. Jones. We're not trying to stop where they are needed, but we are trying to give the local municipalities some say-so on what's going on.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we have people who could go and testify to those things. Thank you.
From the city standpoint and in the regulation itself, we really established this wireless communication. I have it here, 2005, I mean, it changed it. We actually did this back in 1999. I went back to research a little bit more. And we were probably one of the first communities in the state, maybe in the southeast, that had actually dealt with controlling of cell towers as a whole, because we were concerned they were all going to lump, be lumped into one area and impact that area and with no control, again, over the aesthetics or the placement of those. In 2016, we put regulations in place to deal with these small cells in public right-of-ways by establishing where you could actually locate the pole. We established construction standards. We dealt with aesthetics, and we dealt with the height of that particular structure itself. This all came about because of the fact of, we had an issue of a contractor wanting to come in here in 2016 and establish a pole, really, a cell tower, a small cell tower, about 100 feet, right in front of the Bradley Company down here on Front. Nobody would know anything about it, it's just going to show up on the right-of-way, and we said, we just can't have that. And that's why, that's how we got to the point now of establishing these regulations in place, because it just wasn't suitable for the community as a whole. We could see this happening all over the place. And coming to think of it, I think we also had another one up on Armour Road, right there close to the Manchester Expressway as well. To date, we've got just now between 25 and 30 new applications who have submitted that some of you have already got phone calls about. We want to talk about that just a little bit more as well. And the greatest potential impact, of course, is this, are these poles just showing up overnight in neighborhoods, particularly those neighborhoods whose utilities are underground, and all of a sudden they have a pole sitting in their front yard they're not aware of? That's a concern, we're trying to strive for. This is a map, and I know it's a little bit difficult to see on here, so we included this map. It's on the very back of your handout, a little bit larger, you can see, but you can see the number of actual sites throughout the city itself, in terms of what's been actually being constructed, what's incomplete right now. There's also a listing of addresses on here as well, to give you an idea about where these permits are being issued now. We're going to show you some pictures here, too, of this. I mean, I want, this is kind of like a before and after type thing, and I'll let the city manager explain that to you in just a second. But these are the poles we have right here now, close to Amber Drive. This is actually one of these on the right, actually in front of Kinder High School, one a little bit further down the street. This is a wood pole. That thing on top of it is the actual antenna or radio device itself. You can also see the equipment that's hanging off the poles. As Councilor Woodson has pointed out, they're pretty much eye-level, and they're easy to access for anybody. This is the one that Councilor Woodson brought us a couple of weeks back, out there on Ramsey Road itself. Again, you see the wood pole and the equipment out there from that one. This is at Garrett Creek in Glen Valley. This doesn't have the equipment on it. It's got a box on there for the power, but then it may have other items over by now. But this is, again, a wooden pole out there. In this particular case, you can see on the left-hand side in that picture, the streetlights are actually metal. But I don't want to get ahead of myself here on this. This is Park Court and Eagle Drive, same thing for the most part, dealing with the poles there. Broadstone Court and Broadfield Drive, you can see these poles, there's nothing else out there. They're higher than the actual streetlights in some cases, but they just kind of stick out and are very noticeable from that standpoint. This is a development that's happened along Willisty Boulevard, close to the apartments out there. This shows these metal poles actually going in. In this particular case, this is a good example of how they can actually blend into the neighborhood or into the community as a whole, because you have, in this case, you have on one side, on the right side of the picture, you have the street signal itself, and on the opposite side, that small cell is actually one of the streetlights for the area itself. Mr. City Manager, do you want to go ahead and explain now at this point about what happened today?
Well, you know, I'll just say that we, Assistant City Attorney and our staff, the engineering director, planning director, and a few other staff met with one of the, with the company who has actually placed 28 poles in Columbus. They've gotten all these permits. And we let them know the concern of council. I told them I've heard from Council House and his concern, and Council Allen, and Council Woodson brought a photo, and all of the others, you guys, I told them you've expressed concerns, and... and all of the others you guys, I told them you've expressed concerns and, um, and we, we asked them to make sure that they, when they go into a neighborhood, if there's underground utility, you don't go in and put a wood pole. And you don't just go and put a wood pole anywhere in any neighborhood and, and, and we had some very, we had very candid, very candid discussion, you know, uh, and, uh, with him. And so, since we've left that meeting, I received a, um, an email that said that, um, the gentleman called back and said they would replace all the residential poles that are wooden. Uh, and, um, we had the conversation that we had about Ramsey Road, uh, obviously made an impression upon him and, um, he wanted us to know at this meeting. And we talked to him about replacing the wood poles with, um, I guess, metal-
Yes.
-poles that are maybe black and we even talked to him about the possibility of the boxes on the outside, putting them on the inside of the pole, uh, and that kind of thing, that aesthetically it just will make, uh, have a better appearance. And the one thing that I like in this email that I got back, uh, our lawyer said that, um, they, uh, wanted to be clear that they will treat all the neighborhoods the same. And so, uh, I take that to be that, um, they're not going to go in one neighborhood and put a metal pole and another neighborhood and put a wood, wood pole. And so, we're going to continue to have conversation with them and, uh, we know that, uh, the law, the law is on their side. And so, we need to, um, negotiate and, and be pushy and, and get what we can. And I expressed to him very candidly that, um, we would like to be able to say to other cities and counties that, you know, though, though the law is not on our side, they are working with us. And, uh, and so I told him I would love to be able to say that and, and I hope that we can work together, that we will be able to say it. And quite frankly, I told him otherwise, I'm going to fight him every step of the way. I mean, it was just that candid, so.
Got a whole bunch of councilors on the chat.
I'll leave it at that.
We've got, uh-
But, but we're headed in the right direction and with the limited powers that we have.
Okay, we've got the mayor, Proton.
I guess I can just say thank you, Mr. City Manager, because my, my question was going to be about the appearance of the poles. And they had the cute poles in the commercialized zone area and in the residential areas. And no matter where they were, they had the wooden poles, but thank you for addressing that.
Sure.
Okay. We've got, um, uh, Councilor House.
Well, first, thank you for all the work that you've all have done to try to make this better. I had spoken with Mr. Haynes, I think that's who you met with, last week, and to answer Council Wood, Woodson's question about why the boxes are the level that they are. He told me that the cellphone carrier wanted all the boxes where a repairman, repair person, could stand on a three-foot ladder and reach them. And I, I commented to him that, of course, that puts them at the level where somebody walking by could also do damage to it if they so choo, so chose. And he noted that, but anyway, that was the reason he gave me for why all those boxes are where you see them on the side of the pole.
Okay, uh, let's see, Councilor Woodson.
I just want to say to Rick, to poor Donna who I drove crazy, um, and Isaiah, I trust you and I thank you very much. And Councilor House for making that call too, because it's very important for our constituents to know that even if our hands are tied, we're going to do our best. And I want to thank you so much because tomorrow morning I can walk over there and let the neighbor know this ugly pole is going to disappear, prettier pole will be there, but unfortunately it has to be there. But it will be appealing to you and what you have done in our community to enhance it. So from the bottom of my heart, Isaiah, I'm sorry I gave you a hard time. Publicly, I say sorry to you and Donna and Rick, but thank you very much. Sometimes I got to be ugly, but I love you.
Well, and I appreciate that, but I want to be sure to say that our lawyers were out front on this.
Well, thank you too, Clifton, part of our lawyers.
And, uh, and we, we've got to express appreciation to them for their work. And we've got to express appreciation to the company-
Yes.
-for being willing to go out there and bear the expense-
Mm-hmm.
-of replacing, and so we know that that's going to be cost for material and cost for labor. And so we do thank them and, and that, this is the kind of cooperation and that we need from them, that we would be able to say to others that though the law is not necessarily, it doesn't favor us, uh, this company has worked with us to, they, they heard us and, and they listened or they listen and, and they're doing something to, to help us.
Well, to that company too publicly, I say thank you. Appreciate it.
We have, uh, Councilor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, this, uh, presentation gives us the assurance that things are being worked on locally and, and also through our elected, uh, state representatives. So that's a good thing, hopefully we can make progress. I will just say this, a lot of this, I, you know, it's hard to really perceive it or understand it because there's so much common sense. I mean, it's just a common sense kind of approach to this thing. Uh, but, you know, you said something a little while ago that you stated that the, the law is on their side. But, you know, when these poles are being placed right on the edge of the road, of the curb and gutter, is the law going to be on somebody's side when some young kid hits one of those poles and loses their life? You know, I asked that question, to me, it's more of a safety hazard than anything.
Yeah.
So who's responsible?
And that's an excellent question, because we have no control or say.
I mean, it just, it's our right-of-way, but, um, that's con, so, that concerns me more than anything, you know. Aesthetics is one thing, but the location. I think everybody understands the technology and, you know, and they can accept a lot of this stuff, but, you know, the location and, and aesthetics is, is a big thing. Certainly when it's a common sense issue that somebody, it's probably worse than going down Second Avenue, to be honest with you. Pole sitting right on top of the, right on top of the, uh, street. So that really concerns me and, but again, thank you for the presentation, the assurance that we're trying, we're trying to do something positive here and make a difference. Hopefully they'll just work with us and understand, because it's, like I said, it seems to be common sense.
All right, uh, that concludes discussion there. And, um, anything else? Okay, we'll, uh, turn it over then to our clerk.